Campus, we definitely want to utilize the resources that are available here to us at South MEK. And so thanks to our journalism and yearbook teacher for allowing us to utilize her space. And we are excited for all the staff members who have joined us today to ensure that we answer your questions in a timely fashion. Our reopen strong town hall meeting is truly designed for families. And it allows for us to take the answers, the questions that you have shared with us prior to today by way of completing our surveys. And share with you updates that we have on our opening of school plans for school year 2020, 2021. While at the same time engaging all the feedback that we received from the spring and the summer. Well, we heard from you loud and clear that we wanted to be sure that two things happen, that we prioritize safety. And that we maximize learning for all of our students, whether they are in school or at home. We also want to be sure that today we have an opportunity to just be very transparent with you and very candid. Regarding where we are as a school and where we are as a district based on information in which we have been told. And at the same time, give you as a family, an opportunity to ask us questions real time. And so each of you are logged in today to Zoom. The chat feature in Zoom is not live, although you can list questions there. At the conclusion of our presentation, we will post a link. Where you will have an opportunity to type in your questions and we will respond to those questions while you are here today. We have a staff person who will call off those questions and then I will attempt to answer them. We've chosen that particular format because it's critical that we create a frequently asked questions document. That we will share with all of our families along with the recordings from each of these sessions. So that regardless of you were able to ask a question or not, you at least on Friday of this week tomorrow will have a chance to see and hear. All the information that has been shared. So just to kind of put things in perspective as to where we are today and what we're doing. So on our next slide, we'll have an opportunity. To walk you through kind of what we're going to do today. And so we, from a visual perspective, before we go over our agenda. It is extremely important to know that you as a family are more than likely in picture number one. Where that's a fly and we see that fly very close up and personal. And you as a family more than likely want to know all the details up close and personal. And unfortunately, we're not there yet. We know the picture on the very far right is what we all learned and gained from our school district nearly two weeks ago. When we learned that we will be in the plan B plus remote. And so today I want to take you from picture one. To where we all were two weeks ago, picture three. And let's meet in the happy middle where that fly is sitting on a leaf where we can see it. We're not close up on it, but we'll do our very best to be sure we provide you as much information about where we are as possible. So from an agenda perspective, there are a number of things we're going to cover today. Who's who at South, Plan B plus remote versus the full remote academy. We'll talk about the student orientation, we'll talk about our health and safe, health and safety plans. And then we'll even have an opportunity for us to ask you to ask us questions. But before we do that, it is extremely important for you to know the disclaimer that's on the left under our saber paw. The information that's presented today is designed and only applicable for South MEK. For as much as there are details that are the same across all of our schools and CMS. We have customized what will happen at South MEK for our South MEK families. And when we get to that point, I'll share with you what those are. But again, what you hear today is our effort of being extremely transparent with our students and families. But at the same time, please know and understand that in the event that we receive any updates from the district. Or our federal, state or local officials, that that could then cause our guidance that we share today to change or be shifted. So as we think about all the people at South MEK, on your screen now you have our who's who at South. And so everyone knows Mr. Starnes and everyone emails Mr. Starnes and I'm okay with that. I love having that two-way communication with you. But I also want to ensure that our families are aware of all the support team members that we have here who are absolutely amazing. Who can also provide support based on your last name. And so we have structured our team such that based on your student's last name, there is a dedicated assistant principal. A dedicated dean of instruction and culture, a dedicated school counselor. We have designations that are listed on the documents on your screen that allows for you to see. Who our bilingual staff are in English and Spanish. And who our staff members are that are allow, that are a sign language interpreter. And so please feel free to reach out to the respective organizations, excuse me, to the respective staff persons. Who are listed based on your student's last name. If you're not able to reach me directly, or if you choose to just go straight to the source, that is totally okay and possible as well. So Plan B plus remote. Our CMS Board of Education approved for CMS schools that we would operate in a Plan B plus remote. What that means is that 3,400 students that are scheduled to attend South MEK. Would then attend school in the default model of the Plan B plus remote. Students will be broken up into three groups or three cohorts. Where they would attend an in-person orientation over the course of three or four days. So students that are in group A or cohort A would attend school on August the 17th through August the 19th. Students that are in school or in cohort B will have a chance to attend school for four days, the 20th, the 21st, the 24th and the 25th. And then our cohort C students or group C students would attend school for three days, the 26th, the 27th and the 28th of August. It is important to note that these three cohorts were designed for families by the district. So we at the school level did not assign students to cohorts. However, students were assigned based on their household. And so it's not based on your last name, it's not based on your zip code, it's not based on your grade. It is a very randomized model in which students who are assigned to cohort A will include students grades ninth through 12th. It will include students from all across our population. It will increase, include students from all grade levels and all locations in our residential zone. And even within our world language magnet zone. It's also important to note that once you are assigned to a respective cohort, that cohort cannot be changed. And so if you are assigned to cohort A, then because it also means that every one of your household is assigned to cohort A. Same last name or not, then regardless, if I have a third grade sibling at Smithfield Elementary School. Then that third grade sibling will in fact attend school in that same cohort. Based on me being a 10th grade student here at South MEK. That's if in fact I am in Plan B plus remote. Students in Plan B plus remote again will begin remote instruction starting on August the 31st. But you only attend school for the in-person orientation based on the cohort that you have been assigned. So what that means is students in cohort C will only come on August 26th, 27th and 28th. And then they will be at home August 17th, 18th, 19th, 20th, 21st, 24th and 25th. So I hope that provides you with at least an overview as relates to Plan B plus remote. As we think about the Plan B plus remote orientation. This is an opportunity for us to onboard students in small groups. And so we know here at South MEK, next year we are expected to have more than 3,400 students. And so we have gone from about 3280 to next year we're sitting at about 3440. And that's a large increase of students. And so each of our groups are broken down into thirds. So a third for group A or cohort A, a third for group B or cohort B, and a third for group C or cohort C. So that's in and around 1,100 to 1,150 students should all students be in Plan B plus remote. That orientation will in fact be inclusive of some of the items that are listed on your screen. But we know for sure our social and emotional check-in opportunities for our students will be critical. And we also know for sure that engaging our students and what are our instructional expectations and procedures are also going to be critical. We have worked very carefully with our vendor to ensure that all of our underclassmen will have an opportunity on day two of their orientation. To take their school yearbook photo as well. As a reminder, the chat feature that you have in your Zoom link is not available for chatting. We will at the conclusion of the presentation, post a link for you to identify what your questions are. And we will then ask, answer any questions that may be listed in that bitly link that we post. So now as we shift from Plan B plus remote to what has been named as the full remote academy. It is first important to note that the full remote academy is not Plan C. Our school board approved for a plan to be Plan B plus remote for all schools in CMS. And that is not Plan C. We have full remote academy opportunities available where parents can opt in by completing an application. And that application window does in fact close on July the 26th at 11:59 PM for those families interested. The transition opportunity is available for students at the semester break. So what that means is if I am in the full remote academy and I say, you know what? At the end of first semester, I now want to shift over to Plan B plus remote. If we're still in Plan B plus remote. Or if our school board has approved a shift from Plan B plus remote to Plan B. Or Plan B plus remote to Plan A, then the only time you can go in and out or transition is at the semester break. Same thing on the opposite side. If our school board makes a decision on October 31st. That we will shift from Plan B plus remote to Plan B, which means students would then be in school. And they would be in school at no more than 50% capacity based on guidance from the State Department of Public Instruction. And guidance from our governor, then at that time you would not be able to shift on October 31st. Should that decision be made to the full remote academy because you can only go in and out at the semester break. That is extremely critical for our parents and students to understand. The next chart that you see is simply a diagram. In an effort to ensure that our families and students really understand the differences between each of the models. We have provided you with a copy of what CMS has provided to all families across the district. And so under number one, you see Plan B plus remote. What it says is, I want my child to attend school in person when allowed by the Board of Education. If that's you, there's nothing you have to do. It's defaulted that all students will be in Plan B plus remote because that's school as normal as we currently know it. There's no action and nothing that you would have to do. If in fact the school board makes a decision that they would shift instruction. From Plan B plus remote to any other plan, then you remain in that plan. And you would then be expected to follow the instructions as provided by the school through the CMS Board of Education. But again, if you want your child to attend, attend school in person as allowed by the board, there's nothing you have to do. You've already been grouped into Plan A, Plan B or Plan C. And in just a few will tell you when you'll be notified based on which group you're in. Number two indicates though, the full remote academy. So if you are a parent who says, I want my child to stay at home full time. To continue remote learning through the first semester. And I do not want for my child to attend school in person. Then you would then opt into the full remote academy by logging on to the CMS homepage. Or by looking at this particular bitly which is listed and registering by July the 26th. We will begin receiving the names of those students who have signed up for the full remote academy. As early as this week by tomorrow or as late as next week. And then we will be able to know which students are in the full remote academy versus those who are in Plan B plus remote. It's also important to continue to remind ourselves that whenever you sign up for the plan, excuse me, whenever you sign up for the full remote academy. The only opportunity to transition in or out is at the semester break. And then if you happen to be in the far right category, which has a question mark that says, I honestly still don't know. Then that's okay because you have an opportunity to learn more about all the opportunities available through CMS. By either calling the call center at 980-343-3001. Or by visiting one of the links that is on your screen. The next slide is simply a visual. Again, we want to be sure that all of our students and families really have an understanding of the models by looking at it different ways. So we provided you with another visual which allows for you to see the differences between Plan B plus remote. And the full remote academy based upon the group A or cohort A or as listed here, track A. So as we shift then from what are the two models. It's important that we understand that based on the information provided by the district and the state. Life will look very different than it did last semester. And so the reality is the expectation from an instructional perspective is very different. And we want to definitely leave everything from March to June behind us. And think very differently as we go into the upcoming year because the expectations are very different. And that starts with our school schedule. And so on your screen, you will notice a few things that are different from last year to this year, particularly from fourth quarter to this year. So first, our arrival time is from 6:30 to 7:15 for students. Where in the past that arrival time on campus was 6:40 where our students could get off the school bus. So if they were drivers or student drivers, then they could then enter our campus. If they were walkers or if they were car riders, then they could begin arriving around 6:40. That time has been moved up such that all of our students who arrive on campus from 6:30 to 7:15. Will obviously have to go through the wellness screening process. That has been made very clear for all schools across the state of North Carolina. And then applying completion, they then will be directed to go to their first block class, which does begin at 7:15 AM. So it's extremely critical that we know that first block begins at 7:15 AM. That's hard, that's new, that's reality that we do not want for anyone to forget. That means even when we start remote instruction on August 31st. Regardless of we are in Plan B plus remote. Or if you are a student that opted in to the full remote academy. You are expected to be engaged in instruction starting at 7:15 AM. You also will notice on this schedule that our transition time is 10 minutes. Whereas in the past, we've had six minutes between classes. Based on the health and safety plans that we'll share with you in upcoming slides. We in fact have increased the number of minutes for transition between classes to 10 minutes. In addition, after first block, students will then have an SCL or advisory period. That is the same across all high schools in CMS. And this schedule that you see here is the same schedule in all high schools in CMS. This is not a South MEK schedule, we didn't create this just for our students. All high schools will follow the exact same bell schedule per the district. So that SCL block is going to be an opportunity where all students will have. It is not enrichment block reinvented, it's not home room, it's not a saber time, it's not time for remediation or intervention. But it truly is a time where we will begin having those conversations as we think about community building and college and career success. And social and emotional learning opportunities that are inclusive of time management and financial management. And you know, even some areas that may be inclusive of social, excuse me, equity issues and social justice issues. Those are we the same conversations that will be existing in all of our classrooms. And that social and emotional learning block will include students in ninth through 12th grade. Not just based on just ninth graders altogether, 10th graders altogether, that will not be that respective model. You also will notice that third block does have lunchtime because our students will be expected to still eat lunch. Students are able to bring their lunch to school if they choose to. But students also will have the opportunity to in fact have a grab and go lunch, just like a grab and go breakfast. And then you will notice the difference between dismissal, whereas last year dismissal was at 2:15 PM. And this year dismissal is at 1:45 PM and it is a staggered dismissal. So that means we will begin dismissing students by buildings. In comparison to at 2:15 last year, bell rang, all students dismissed for the day. In the new model, based on the instructional expectations, we will have a staggered dismissal at 1:45. The schedule that you see on your screen is applicable to students regardless of the plan. If you are in Plan B plus remote, this is your schedule. If you are in the full remote academy, this is your schedule. The only difference between the two is if you're in the full remote academy, there is no arrival from 6:30 to 7:15. Your first block simply starts at 7:15. If you are in the full remote academy, there is no staggered dismissal to go get on your school bus. You truly dismiss at 1:45. So Mr. Starnes, does that really mean that I have to be online and engaged in learning from 7:15 to 1:45? Attention students, school is back in session. And so yes, that means that you are expected to be engaged in learning beginning at 7:15 every day until school dismisses at 1:45. Exclusive of those transition times between classes and that lunchtime that you will be assigned. The next chart also breaks us down on the attendance expectations. And so it's also important to know that this is very different from the fourth quarter. Whereas now there is an expectation that students are engaged in learning on a daily basis. And so on our remote instruction days, if you are in Plan B plus remote, that remote instruction begins on August 31st. If you are in full remote academy, that remote instruction begins on August 17th. Attendance is determined by daily evidence of student engagement with the instructional content. As you see on your screen, this is limited to, this includes, but it is not limited to. Attending and participating in synchronous class instruction. And we'll talk about the difference between synchronous and asynchronous instruction in just a moment. But it also is inclusive of evidence of engagement with the class material based on what's in Canvas. It also is inclusive of submission of assignments and completing assessments. Because yes, it is extremely important to know that you are expected to complete assignments. And you will have assessments, even though we are in a remote phase. At the high school level, attendance will be monitored every day for every single class. So first block, if you have AP statistics, attendance will be monitored. If second block on A days, you have AP biology, attendance will be monitored. If second block on B days, you have contemporary art and design, attendance will be monitored. If third block, you have health and PE, attendance will be monitored. If fourth block, you have biology, attendance will be monitored. When we engage in remote instruction and our students begin to disengage. Or not involved in that learning process for five or more days. Members of our administrative leadership team will then collaborate with our school counselors. And other members of student services to identify those supplemental or intensive supports. Needed for students who have now disengaged. And then if necessary, will provide wraparound services to other students and families as needed. Additionally, as we think about instructional expectations, you probably remember last year. We were very much so in an asynchronous learning environment, which means students were expected to receive instruction. Teachers had assignments that they posted online on Sundays. Students completed those assignments at their self-paced or at their own rate. They simply turned them in by Thursday, teachers graded them and then the process just simply continued and continued. Well, that is definitely gone and we are now in a synchronous and asynchronous model. Such that all of our students will be expected to engage in learning on a daily basis in each of their classes, real time. Virtually for at least 40 minutes of that class period. So that means if your first block class that starts at 7:15, that may have 70 or 75 minutes in that class. 40 minutes of that, you are expected to be online, engaging and learning with that respective teacher. That is extremely important that you know and remember. It's a blend though. And so that blend of synchronous and asynchronous learning is extremely important. Because there could also be some assignments from asynchronous model that are self-paced, that are pre-recorded. And that do allow for that student to complete those independently. But of that 70 to 75 minutes, you can expect 40 minutes of that. That you are engaged in learning with your classmates, with your teacher in a remote fashion on a daily basis in every single class. As we think about the slide that's on your screen, it's another chart which allows for you to see the differences. And so as I mentioned, on each of the days prior, students will have their same teachers, their same classes. Regardless if they are in the Plan B plus remote or if they are in the full remote academy. So Mr. Starnes, how does that work? How are you telling me that I'm still going to have German for honors even if I'm in the full remote academy? Absolutely. Your first block class, if you had first block German. You still will have your first block with that same German teacher that is a South MEK teacher. On an 8A B day schedule or on a four by four schedule, regardless of your decision for the plan. The student will still engage in learning with their classmates as they typically would. The only difference is on the teacher's side, the teacher will see things differently on their screen as they begin to engage students. There is no difference in the instructional model, all of the classes as listed in the second row. That are offered here at South MEK, inclusive of our health and PE, inclusive of our art classes, our orchestra, our band classes. Our RTC classes, all classes offered at South MEK, even the world language classes. Will be offered in a remote fashion in Plan B plus remote and the full remote academy. In the event that a decision is made by the CMS Board of Education to move from Plan B plus remote. To Plan B where students are engaging in face-to-face instruction up to 50% capacity. Or Plan A where we are in school 100% of our students. Then the students who are in the full remote academy will then continue to engage virtually. With those classmates and those students and that teacher who are onsite. Students in full remote will now be zoomed in or Google met in or Canvas live in. While those students are sitting in that classroom. But again, no change to your class schedule, all classes will still be offered and that is inclusive of all of our classes at South MEK. Here at South MEK, no student will be assigned to an NCVPS class with an instructor online and said, go fly. No student will be assigned to a class on edge annuity and expected to go fly. All of our students will continue to engage with instruction by a South MEK teacher. In the classes with their students regardless of the decision for Plan B plus remote. Or the decision to opt into the full remote academy. Again, the attendance expectations are the same, all students will use Canvas. The blend of synchronous and asynchronous learning will be the same. Students who are interested in clubs and extracurricular opportunities and athletics will still have those opportunities regardless of their decision. Grading will be the same, assessments and tests will be the same, all that stuff is the same. So really, Mr. Starnes, what's the difference? The difference is if you are in Plan B plus remote. At any time, if the school board makes a decision to move from Plan B plus remote. To Plan B or Plan B plus remote to Plan A, you got to follow that plan. And so if we now have to come into an in-person environment, then you're expected to do so. And you can't now shift over to the full remote academy. The only other difference is the social interaction. Students who are in the full remote academy do not have that social interaction the first two weeks of school. Based on their group A or cohort A or cohort B or cohort C. That's another portion that is truly missing. But again, regardless of your decision at South MEK, and again, I can only speak for South MEK. We will not be engaging our students in NCVPS courses across the board. And we will not be putting our students on edge annuity classes in an effort to substitute for a true live teacher. Students who are enrolled in our occupational course of study diploma track. Will continue to have their classes on NCVPS as they always would, even if they were in school 100% full-time face-to-face. So we talked about Canvas, what is Canvas? Well, Canvas is an online learning platform that has been used in previous years, but will continue to be used. But now it's required for all classes for all students. So there's no more Google classrooms that we will be utilizing, there's no more Schoology that we'll be utilizing. All of our teachers will be expected to use Canvas across all schools in CMS. In addition to that opportunity though, there's amazing opportunity where parents will be able to download a Canvas app. Should you be interested in doing so, and then you will have knowledge of what assignments are due and when are they due. You can see grades in your students' classes, you can get email updates from your teacher. You can see grades in your students' classes, you can get email updates from your teachers of your students, and you can even have that two-way communication with your student's teacher as well. The instructions are on your screen on how to actually download that app, and we will also be sure to include this registration information for all students and all families on how to access the Canvas Parent App regardless of you're in Plan B plus remote or the full remote academy. We'll include this in the back-to-school mailer that you will receive and we'll talk about in just a few. It is also available in additional languages as listed on your screen. So, now, we've talked a lot about instruction, and hopefully, the information that we've shared has helped you from an instructional perspective. Now, let's shift just a little bit to the health and safety plan for us here at Southmech. And so, all schools across the district and all schools across the state of North Carolina received guidance from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction as relates to what we are hearing, the name being Lighting Our Way Forward, and what you see on your screen is the Lighting Our Way Forward document. This particular document gives us guidance on how we should reopen schools with specific emphasis on the health and safety of our students and our staff. We will be sure to include a link to the Lighting Our Forward document, Lighting Our Way Forward, excuse me, document in the Zoom chat for you today so that you can review this document at your leisure. But please know it can also be Googled, simply typing in Lighting Our Way Forward NC, and you can see the complete document, which is very comprehensive, that all of our schools and school districts are expected to use as a guideline. But for us here at Southmech, you will notice the difference, you will notice this. A, all of our hallways and buildings will be one way, right? And so, all of our hallways and buildings will be one way, which means there will be one entrance in, one entrance out, which ensures that we don't have students that are crossing each other. We also have grab and go breakfast and lunch. All of our classes will have no more than sixteen students in them. That is critical that you know and understand that because that does in fact allow for our social distancing to take place in each of our classes. Keep it in mind, here at Southmech, we have thirty-four hundred students, and based on the default model where all students are in Plan B plus remote, that then does mean that between eleven hundred to eleven hundred fifty students will be on campus at a given time, which also does ensure that we have no more than sixteen students in a class at a given time because typically, our class average is about thirty-two. We also know that we'll have no more than twenty-four students on the bus at a given time because, again, we are in a third, a third, a third Cohort A, Cohort B, Cohort C, even before students have an opportunity to opt into the virtual full remote academy. We also know and realize that restroom breaks will not be able to take place during that transition time. And so, students will be expected to use the restroom during the class time as we listed on the schedule previously, but restroom breaks are not doing transitions, which also ensures that we maintain that one-way hallway and building model that we talked about a minute ago. But it also ensures that we have opportunities to maintain the health and safety of all of our students and our staff. All staff and all students will be required to wear a face cloth covering at all times on our campus, and that is all staff and all students. We know at Southmech, and we are very transparent, we leave from a transparent eye, we know that last year, prior to COVID nineteen and prior to March thirteenth, we had a great conversation with our student council and some of our students who were concerned with how often we were restocking our restrooms and the supplies that we had on campus. We have worked very hard with our team, our custodial team, our administrative team, and developed the daily cleaning schedule and a monitoring and restocking plan for our restrooms such that every single block, each of our restrooms, will have a staff person that checks those restrooms. They will chart off that that restroom in fact has the necessary supplies and materials, and we will then have an opportunity for there to be restocking instantly, right there on the spot, based on the new plan that we have put in place. So, we heard you loud and clear, and we have put plans in place for that. We also know that we will have ongoing and routine classroom cleaning and disinfecting between classes such that students who will come to school for Plan B plus remote, those first two weeks during Cohort A, B, and C, they can expect for those classroom desks and other areas that are hot-touch in that classroom and other instructional materials which have in fact been used to be disinfected and cleaned prior to the next group of students that are coming in for that class period. Again, these health and safety plans are outlined in our Lighting Our Way Forward document, which you have access to by Googling and you have access to in the chat feature today. It's also important to know that we, again, have stagger dismissal at the end of the day by building to ensure that all of those students who are in Plan B plus remote and attending school for the Cohort A, B, or C orientation do not all dismiss at one time, and so, we will in fact be dismissing students staggeredly. And we also know that I talked about earlier the increased time between classes, which does allow for our students who may be in O building or our students in F building to still transition with the social distancing in mind and enough time to get to class within that ten minutes while maintaining the health and safety that we talked about. Last but not least, as we think about health and safety plans, hand sanitizer stations will be available in every single classroom, and hand sanitizer stations will be at the one-way entrances of all buildings on our campus. So, as students are entering those buildings, there will be hand sanitizer stations there, and those opportunities will be available at the entrance of every classroom as well. If there's any family who just logged on, as a reminder, you now see on your screen a link where you can simply type in your questions. The chat feature for Zoom today is not where we are entertaining questions because we are creating a frequently asked question document so that allows for us to have all the questions that you enter typed up. We can now have all the answers that we share so that we can now combine all those into a frequently asked questions document that we will then publish for all of our families and students tomorrow when we also publish each of these live recordings that have all been recorded. So, you'll have a chance to hear every single recording. If you want to just verify that Mr. Starnes say the same thing yesterday that he said today, yes, you can listen to every single one of them to be sure that I'm sending the same message to everybody. So, as you are typing in your questions, we'll go to the next slide to be sure that we are gonna just go ahead and answer any frequently asked questions now. And there are a few who may have typed a couple of questions in the chat feature, and so, we will answer those as we are waiting on that. But again, if you can be sure that you only post your questions in the Bitly link, which is in the chat feature, and it was on your screen. So, first, will a copy of this presentation and slides be sent after this town hall? Absolutely. When we post tomorrow the frequently asked questions and when we post the links where you can listen to the live recordings and see it again, we will also post the link to the slides. Very good question. Will there be another session like this for students? My children had conflicts yesterday, but would like to have joined. So, we will not have another session for students, but because these are recorded, students, families, or staff will in fact be able to go and listen to this particular recording at a later date at any time. Will students not in Cohort A begin virtual learning during the remainder of the two weeks? So, very good question. So, as we mentioned, students who are in Plan B plus remote, they only come to school for three days if they are in Group A, four days if they're in Group B, and three days if they're in Group C. And so, what that means is, if I'm in Group C, that first seven days, I'm not at Southmech. And so, our team, our administrative leadership team, are working very hard on very scripted opportunities where students can engage in varied learning opportunities while they are not in school those first seven days or those first three days or however many days they're not here based on their model. Because it's important to remember, Plan A students or Group A students or Cohort A students only come the first three days, and the next seven, they don't. Whereas Cohort B, Group B, or Plan B, they don't come the first three, and they don't come the last three. And then Cohort C, Group C, or Plan C, they don't come the first seven, but they come the last three. So, we will be working extremely hard to ensure that you, as families and students, have the information necessary of what students are expected to do on those days when they're not here if they are in Plan B plus remote and if they are in the full remote academy, what they are expected to do in that time as well. What happens if seniors are going to CPCC in addition to Southmech? Is that still an option? So, students that qualify to go to CPCC as a rising eleventh grader, as a rising twelfth grader, they still have those opportunities to engage in learning by enrolling in classes at CPCC. The registration deadline for that is coming up, and if you have not engaged in conversations with Ms. Snipes already, who is our College and Career Development Coordinator, you want to visit her on our school website, email her because the registration deadline is July the twenty-sixth for students to enroll in fall classes at CPCC. But yes, juniors and seniors can still take classes at CPCC even if they are in the Plan B plus remote or the full remote academy. What is the earliest date CMS can vote to go to a Plan B format? So, at this time, our school board has complete control as to they can make a decision to go into a Plan B or to go into a Plan A at any time. When do we have the schedule for this year? We'll talk about that on the next slide, and then the last question from the screen is, will a teacher be teaching students in the classroom under Plan B plus remote at the same time as students in the full remote? In other words, will synchronous learning for fully remote academy be at the same time for their teacher in the same students' building, but full remote students will participate in the class? So, to lump that question all into one, teachers will be teaching students at the same time regardless of the model. And so, if I have a second block class that's AP Psychology, while students are engaging in learning in AP Psychology in the Plan B plus remote, that will take place at the exact same time by the exact same teacher as students who are enrolled at second block who are in the full remote academy. If the school board makes a decision to move from Plan B plus remote to Plan B or Plan B plus remote to Plan A, then in that situation, those students who are in full remote academy will now be zoomed in to learning with their classmates who are sitting in class onsite. I mentioned October thirty-first simply as an example. Should the school board make a decision, but that decision could be September eleventh, it could be September twelfth, it could be February third, it could be any date of the three hundred sixty-five days in the calendar. We're gonna go to the Bitly for questions, so again, the chat feature is not the place for questions. We will, on your screen, you should see the Bitly link, and that's intentional such that we will have an opportunity to capture all questions and ensure that we have answers to the frequently asked questions as listed. So, I'm gonna turn it over to our team to call off the questions, and then I will work my best to answer any questions that you have.
When is tutoring available for students in a virtual environment?
So, tutoring is available for students in a virtual environment because, again, we have a blended model. And so, the blend of asynchronous and synchronous learning does include opportunities of forty minutes of live instruction, and then after that forty minutes would be an opportunity where students and teachers will be able to engage in remediation or enrichment or tutoring. What we do know is that currently tutoring opportunities that were before school and after school are not available during the first two weeks because we cannot have before and after school activities on our campus. But we do know that tutoring is critical, and we will continue to work very hard to ensure that is embedded. Those opportunities are embedded in the minutes that we have available to our students based on the bell schedule that was on that previous screen.
Since sixteen or less students per class, does that mean that Plan B plus remote students may not be in the classes that they had originally signed up for? For example, audition classes like chamber choir that are only offered in one spot if more than sixteen people in their assigned track have registered for it.
So, we will not be making any class changes and taking students out of any classes that they requested. And so, regardless of the type of class, the sixteen number is a comment, we can accommodate for that because, again, students here at Southmech will be grouped in three groups. We have thirty-four hundred students, you divide that by three, you get eleven hundred-ish. And so, based on that, we are able to accommodate students in no more than sixteen at a given time in all of our classes because in no rotation will we have the full number of students in that given class. And so, that does mean that if you have a class that may be honors German four that only had twenty-seven students enrolled in it total, in Group A, you may have seven students, in Group B, you may have three students, that's ten. And so, in Group A, you may have eight students, that's eight. In Group B, you may have five students, that's thirteen. And then in Group C, you may have the remaining fourteen students. It won't be an equal number in each, but it will not be more than sixteen students. And at the same time, if there's seven students who are enrolled in the full remote academy, they still will have an opportunity to engage in that learning at the exact same time.
How will classes such as chorus, weight training, or auto mechanics be handled in the full remote action?
So, our students will have an opportunity to engage in learning for all of their classes regardless of the type of course. Our district specialists and our master teachers, a number of which are teachers at Southmech, have created all course, all opportunities from a remote fashion for online learning for all classes. So, for example, our automotive program, which is led by Mr. Atkins, he has been one of the lead teachers for the district to create what that remote instruction will look like for Automotive Three Honors, for Automotive Four Honors. And so, our teachers have had opportunities all summer to engage in that curriculum process to ensure that all classes, hands-on culinary, where they may have some kits that are available to them, to game art design, which is a special program, that they now have to have a special laptop that's loaned to them, to Health and PE classes where they may be engaging in some varied workouts that are virtual. All of our classes are able to be taught from a virtual perspective because our district specialists and Southmech teachers have had the opportunity to complete that work prior to students, to teachers returning on August the sixth.
How will onboarding or orientation happen with a fully remote plan so they get a chance to meet their teacher?
So, we will in fact have Sabre University, which will be inclusive of freshman orientation and open house and meet the teacher. Our Sabre University plans will also be shared in the back-to-school mailer, but all of that will take place virtually. And so, students will have an opportunity to meet their teachers, students will have an opportunity to meet their school counselor. All of that will in fact take place virtually because we will not have any of those back-to-school sessions, which we typically would onsite.
With staggered dismissal by building, won't having siblings in different buildings back up the carpool line?
So, we do understand that, for example, if there's a student who has an older sibling or a younger sibling, that if we dismiss A building at one forty-five and we dismiss C building at one forty-eight, then potentially that will cause the delay in the carpool line. What we also realize is that traffic with thirty-four hundred students is a hot mess, but we do believe that traffic with now eleven hundred students will not be as much of a hot mess. And so, we realize that there could be a delay of five minutes for a sibling to get to the car or a sibling to get on the bus, but we know that the health and safety of our students takes precedence over that three or five-minute delay for a student who may be a car rider or for that student who may be waiting on their sibling at the bus. We will not dismiss buses until all students have been dismissed from their buildings, and so, we will not have a student being left because they're waiting on a sibling who may be in a different building.
When should parents drop medication off for students that require nurse-administered medication during the in-person orientation?
It's a very good question, and so, we will in fact be sure to include that, team, if we can make a note of the medication. We'll be sure to include that information in our back-to-school virtual orientation for all students and families. That will be prior to students coming on August the seventeenth, and we'll be insured, be sure to include that in our back-to-school mailer if in fact a student has medication that they need the nurse to have onsite. We'll be sure to include those instructions. Very good question, and that has not come up before today, so thank you.
What about students with an IEP or a 504 plan?
So, students who receive specialized services with an IEP. So students who receive specialized services with an IEP, a 504 plan, or an ESL plan will continue to receive the necessary supports as listed in their plan. Um and that has been very clearly laid out per um our EC playbook and our EL plans that have been provided from the district. We will in fact continue to provide the necessary supports um per those plans for those respective students when we are here for Plan B plus remote and when we are in a virtual uh model after August 31st for Plan B plus remote and for the full remote academy. All of our students will continue to receive service per their plan IEP, EL, or 504.
So as a clarifying question, I'd like to confirm that South MEK teachers will be teaching the classes for the full remote academy option. And that even if CMS goes back to Plan B before the semester ends, my child will still be zoomed in for live classes as part of the full remote academy.
That's the best way to put it. That is exactly correct. The difference between the full remote academy and the Plan B plus remote is actually very little from an instructional perspective. And so the student will still have their teacher, the exact same teacher regardless of the plan that they're in. And if in fact, we go from Plan B plus remote to a Plan B or to from Plan B plus remote to a Plan A, your student will be zoomed in if they are in the full remote academy to the learning that's taking place in an in-person environment. So the student regardless will still have that same South MEK teacher, that same South MEK class at the exact same time. And again, that is how we are doing it at South MEK because we want to be sure that our students are experiencing learning as they normally would. I cannot guarantee that that may be the same if you have a student at another high school in CMS or if you have another student at a middle school in CMS. I cannot guarantee, make that guarantee, but our team has worked and it is definitely feasible. Um and that information has been shared with our teachers as well.
Will the school allow the SAT to use the school building in August?
So here in South, at South MEK, we do not have uh the opportunity to give permission for community use or for organizations to use our campus. Those permissions come from CMS, from the district. And so once the district gives permission for organizations like College Board or Jordan's Driving School or any of those other agencies to use our space, then at that time, we will have an opportunity for those agencies to use our space. We have in fact received a number of emails from students and families asking, can SAT still be offered on this day at this time? And that unfortunately is not within our approval um zone.
With weather, how it is, is there a plan for days when areas have power outages?
So just as it would be whenever we are normally in school, if we have power outages, then we would work very hard to ensure that our generators kick in um and that we maintain power on our campus.
Has there been any thought of how to manage choir in a way to reduce the additional risk of occurred by singing?
Say that again?
Is there any thought as to how to manage choir in a way to reduce the additional risk occurred by singing?
So all of our classes, um I think the question was is there, is there a way to reduce the risk in choir while students are singing? And so again, from August the 17th to August the 28th, that's an orientation um perspective. And so it is extremely important that we know that during that orientation time, our teachers will work and to ensure that the health and safety of all of our students regardless of choir or not. Because in all of our classes, you may not sing, but you gotta talk. Um and so the risk is there. Um but so we will ensure that instruction is in a manner in which the health and safety of students um is maintained. While at the same time though, it is important to know and understand that all of our classes, once they start on August the 31st in a remote fashion, are still able to be um instructed by a South MEK teacher. I hope that answers that question. If not, if you can restate the question and um in the uh form and then we will try and answer it for you.
Will there be any notation on transcripts that my child was enrolled in the full remote academy? I'm concerned that colleges will not understand that it is the same instructional level.
Very good question. So when you receive your transcript, it won't have nothing on it that says anything about Plan B versus Plan B plus versus Plan A versus Plan C versus COVID class versus full remote academy. All it's gonna do is say honors biology, whatever year you took it, whatever grade you had, as it always would. There will be no designation on a college transcript for a difference because the reality is there should not be in any school, a difference in the course. But there will be no designation on a transcript that says, well, no, Glenn took that remote, so he didn't get the full credit. There would be nothing like that.
What support is CMS and or South MEK giving to teachers who have children at home so that they can focus 100% on their students during the school day schedule?
So it's very difficult for me to answer that question. What support is CMS or South MEK providing? Because ultimately, our number one goal is to ensure that we have school operating as normal. And so I know that CMS is working on um some potential partnerships with daycares and 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 others alike. But the reality is the same challenge that South MEK teachers would experience from a childcare perspective, all employees across the country and in our state would experience from a childcare perspective. And we have communicated to our staff um the need for high quality instruction for all of our students and our teachers following the model and the time for bell schedule that has been provided. And we as a school do not have um any special services that will be provided for teachers for childcare to ensure that they are able to uh perform their duties. Our, our number one goal throughout this entire period has been A, the safety of our students and staff, and B, to ensure we maximize on learning. I know CMS is interested in looking into that. But the same parent who needs childcare for their kid um who works at Atrium Health and the same parent who needs childcare for their kid who works at South MEK, maybe the same parent who needs childcare for their kid who works at Wendy's.
What is the efficacy of changing school counselors during this time? And how will effective students, affected students meet their new counselors?
So in the earlier session, that question came up. That the question was what was the efficacy in changing school counselors at this time? And so here at South MEK, we know and realize, just as with all schools across the city um and the state, that folks transition in their roles, just as all of us have switched jobs at some point. We had staff members in our student services team who've switched jobs, two of which who retired after more than 30 years of service in the profession and one of which transitioned to a new school district. And so as a result, we did in fact have to hire new school counselors to replace them. But at the same time, we gained a brand new position because prior to um this year, our school couns, this year being the school year that just ended, our school counselors were servicing upwards of 500 students on their caseload. And that is just, that's ridiculous. That's a lot of kids that one counselor is responsible for. So we increased our number of school counselors such that counselors now have between 350 to 400 students on their caseload. And our school counselors have the same alpha for ninth through 12th grade. There's no now, no freshman academy counselor versus a upper grade counselor. And so unfortunately, that change happened at the same time of COVID-19. But we do know and believe that our student services team are well-equipped with the very highly qualified school counselors to ensure that all of our students receive the necessary support for college and career success and high school success. And you can meet him or her by A, either emailing them because all their information is available on that directory that we shared earlier and on our social media pages. Or they can also set up a virtual opportunity to talk with you and meet you. They had very minimal shifts across um students who may now have a brand new counselor that only existed in instances while either A, that counselor transitioned, as I mentioned, they retired or they left and went to a brand new um school district. Or B, um they were on the, the edge of an alphabet that then was caught in that middle. Very, very few students who were impacted in a negative fashion. But again, if I'm a school counselor and I went from 500 to now 350, that opportunity to engage with students um is gonna be greater. And we, we just had to make a tough decision that that was more, that we felt like that was most important and impactful during this time.
I have a student who is new to South MEK. When will access to campus plus other portals be given? Also, is there IDS?
So on the next slide, we're gonna just take you to, at the very bottom, you notice that student schedules, group rotations, and transportation information will be made available to students in Power School on August the 8th. And we will have a back to school mailer that will include student schedules, student rotations, transportation information, their student identification cards and other information that you will need in order to have a successful opening of school. And so you can expect on August the 8th that your student can log in to Power School and see their schedule. If you are new to South MEK and you are new to CMS, then you also will receive that information in the mail on how to log in. But the reality is if you have been in CMS, it's the same way you log into Power School. So you should be able to see your classes, everything on August the 8th. At that time, you also would see the designation if you were in Plan B plus remote for A group, B group, or C group. Transportation information will not be available to see on Power School, but it is in fact, um gonna be mailed to you in that mailer.
Is there an opportunity for new student orientation since my student has never been on South MEK's campus and won't know where to go the first three days?
So all of our orientation opportunities, new student orientation, open house, meet the teacher will be virtual. However, on an individual basis, those families who are new to South MEK and or new to the district can simply email us. Um and we can make arrangements on an individual basis so that you will have a chance to see our campus prior to arriving on August the 17th or whatever day is for your respective group.
Why is one group going four days and the other two groups only going three?
So our CMS school district made a decision that across the, the two weeks that in fact, students would in group A be three days, groups B four days, and group C three days. If you divide 10 by three, you don't get an even day number. So someone would have to go an odd number of days. And we, if in fact, we return to an in-person learning at a later date, then those students who are in group B um would definitely be taken into consideration um at a later date. But there's, there's no easy answer for that. It's just 10 divided by three. There's no three points um that we could do for days. Not we being, uh, we being our district.
Regarding the schedule, do you have any start and end times for each block? Also, if new to CMS and to South, how can we learn more about the SEL advisory?
So the SEL advisory block is brand new to all students, brand new to all students regardless if you were at South MEK last year or if you were in CMS. And so learning more about that SEL advisory block is gonna be critical for all of our families. And we are currently working, we just learned about this information about two weeks ago as a school. And so we are working very hard collaboratively onsite and collaboratively with other schools in our district, high schools in particular, to ensure that we have a very solid curriculum for that SEL block and advisory and that it's able to be implemented with fidelity by our teachers. We also know and realize that the schedule that you saw today may look a little bit different from the schedule yesterday because the schedule yesterday did have times for every single block. But what we noticed across the district is that we've had an era where there was no transition after first block to go to second block. And so that transition time has now been added in. And we will be sure that that new schedule is available for you. But the reality is there's two times you don't want to forget. 7:15 is when school starts, 2:45 is when, excuse me, 1:45 is when school ends. All our team members who are in a TV studio will be like, one, one, one. 1:45 is when school ends. Um and so 7:15 to 1:45 and as soon as um we get the exact times for each block, the updated times, we'll be sure to share that information out as well.
Can you describe how the remote students will receive synchronous instruction when there's in-person instruction occurring during orientation or when the district moves back to Plan B? I heard you say that they'll have it. I would just like more clarification.
So again, as we looked at that second slide, we talked about the fly being right here close up. We talked about the fly on the tree in a, in a big land. And then we talked about the fly on the um leaf. And so we're not there yet with the fly on the, in our face. Just being honest and transparent with you, we are working to ensure that you as a family have a very scripted model as to on August 18th, if I am in Plan B, what am I to do? Or on August 18th, if I am in uh the full remote academy, what am I to do for those first two weeks? If you are not onsite, we are working through that. We don't have all those details available to share today. We've been um processing and working through that for the past three or four days. But today was really designed to give you as much as we have at this point. So at least you have a very good shell to be able to make a solid decision without knowing at 11:59 on August the 18th, what am I supposed to do? I want to say this, um as we take about two more questions, hopefully that's most of them. We'll take maybe about five more minutes for questions if, about five more minutes for questions, but I wanted to say this. As we go through this process, it's important to know the reality, right? If you've met me face to face, you know, I just shoot it to you like it is. At no point when I accepted this job last year this time did I sign up to be the virtual school principal of South Mecklenburg High School. Our teachers didn't sign up to be virtual school teachers at South Mecklenburg High School. And so we ask that you bear with us because we truly as a school are creating this as we go. And we will not stand up and say we have all the answers today, but we are working very hard to be sure that we share with you what we do know and that we engage you when we can. And then that we are just honest and transparent and say, we're not there yet. Well, we working to get there. And so I, I just want to own the fact and, and acknowledge that we are really working hard, even if we don't have the answer to your um specific question, to work to be sure that we get that soon. We enjoy what we do and we're embracing this new thing. We gonna write a book about it. But we're, we're not there on all things yet.
On the CMS website, it says magnet classes may not be offered. Is South MEK guaranteeing that these will be offered?
Here at South MEK, you can guarantee that every single course in our course catalog will be offered to our students at South MEK, every single course. Again, some of our neighboring schools may not have the capacity that we do. There are lots of advantages of being so big. And then obviously, there are lots of disadvantages of being so big. But because we are so big, we can do things that some of our neighboring schools may not be able to do because of the sheer number of staff that we have and the number of um uh staff that we have that bring varied perspectives to the table. So yes, at South MEK, all of our classes, magnet uh and non-magnet will be offered. Whereas in some schools, they may not be able to do that in, in the full remote academy.
Will students still need to purchase parking passes?
Good question. So we sent that out in the email, um but it probably was lost in a whole lot of stuff. We will not be selling parking passes to students because of currently, the reality is students will only be on campus for three or four days depending upon their um group number. And so at this time, we are not selling parking passes. We will have open parking available for those days when we are in school for group A, group B, or group C, at which time um students who have a valid driver's license and have a vehicle with a um valid insurance will be able to in fact park on our campus in available parking spaces. If the school board moves from a Plan B plus remote to a Plan B or Plan A, then at that time, we'll engage in um parking permit um selling in that discussion.
Will clubs and student organizations such as National Honor Society, Sabre ambassadors, and HOSA still occur during this time?
So all of our clubs, organizations um will still occur even during the remote phase.
If you choose the virtual academy, will students have a designated time to pick up Chromebooks? And if there are Chromebook issues, what is the process for that?
So we will in fact have a designated time for students to pick up Chromebooks and that information will be shared um in the mailer that will be made available. And as soon as that mailer is available, if there's like important stuff that's in it that you want to know, or not you want to know that we think you should know instantly, we'll also post it on, online and send you an email, so on and so forth. But at the same time, we will continue to use the same link that we've always had for technology support. All of our students who have a Chromebook um have that link as a um screensaver on their screen in the scrolling announcements. You just simply click on the link for technology support. And at the same time, when your student receives that Chromebook, if they currently don't have one, then we also will ensure that they have the um, the link. then we also will ensure that they have the, um, the link to do so.
It looks like the instructional time has been decreased. How long is each class?
So at this time, each class will be between seventy to seventy-five minutes. The SEO block currently will be between forty to forty-five minutes. Um, the last question that came through, I was told that my student can opt for Plan B plus but not attend the onboarding days and still continue with South MEK teachers remotely for the entire semester and use a code seven hundred. Is that true or is that only for the virtual academy? So it is important to know that students who are in Plan B plus remote are expected to attend the orientation those three days or four days depending upon what group they're in. Students are expected, if you're in Plan B plus remote, we are expected to welcome you with open arms and mask on our face on those three or four days that you are expected to come to school. If in fact you have no intention of coming those three days, then it's encouraged that you do in fact enroll in the full remote academy. Why? Because your learning experience will be no different than students who are in the Plan B plus remote. You are in fact expected to attend those orientation on those three days if in fact you are in Plan B plus remote. For you to do so in fact does count as an unexcused absence unless you have the necessary documentation for us to then change that to an excused absence. So the next slide we're gonna take you to um is kind of what our next steps are. Um, so our next steps as a school are for you to learn more about the uh opportunities available in the full remote academy and learn more about Plan B plus remote. Um, you can view our CMS website or the South MEK website, or you can always contact one of us directly. And we will work to ensure um that we answer that question. If you have a question about course scheduling, so on and so forth, then feel free to reach out to one of our student services team members or your counselor directly. Don't forget, July the twenty-sixth is the date that you must decide by if you are interested in a full remote academy. And don't forget to join our PTSA at South MEK and or at South MEK Foundation. Our last slide is simply, um, oh, that was the last slide. Alright guys, that was the last slide. I'm sorry. I've done these things so many times, I've gotten forgotten. Thank you so much. We hope that this was helpful. Um, if it was helpful, please be sure that you share that because our team who have all are in um are all in the room worked hard to ensure that the information that has been provided are very helpful for you. Um, we are trying our best to model what we are expecting of our students and staff when they return. Um, and we simply thank you for your flexibility and support. Um, if you have any other questions or there's something that you really didn't get an answer to, um, don't hesitate to let us know and we will work hard to um get that answer to you if we have it. Thank you so much. Have a great day. We have another session at four, at four o'clock in Spanish. And then at six in English. Thank y'all so much. Have a great day.